We'd like to welcome you to our Mesa City Council's study session for the morning of January 4th, 2024. Happy New Year. I think we enter this new year very optimistic about how the city of Mesa is doing. I'm looking forward to sharing with you my thoughts on that at the State of the City. Please put on your calendar. That's February the 13th, and we'll do a deep dive into some of the things that I'm particularly excited and optimistic about regarding the city of Mesa. But for today, I'll just say Happy New Year and welcome everybody back. And I'll note for the record that all of our council are present this morning. First item on our agenda, item one, is to review our agenda for our Monday night meeting this coming January 8th. So council, please refer to that document. I know that we have some staff presentations on a couple of agenda items, so maybe we'll begin with that to see if that answers some questions that we might have. Mr. Brady, I think you've said 5A and 9A?
Yeah, so let's have representatives of the police department, if they'll come up, to, we have some information we'd like to share with you about 5A.
Great, thank you. Welcome.
Good morning.
Thank you, good morning. We're gonna be queued up. Andrew? It's probably super easy, there we go. Good morning, Mayor, council. Thank you for having us. Happy New Year. I'm joined today by Matt Koontz, who's our Sergeant of our Real-Time Crime Center, and I'm Stephanie Derrivan, the Commander over Metro Resources. So we're here to talk a little bit about the IGA for the Mesa Public Schools camera system that we are, will be integrating into the Real-Time Crime Center. Do you wanna talk a little bit about this?
Sure. Council, as all of you've been into the Real-Time Crime Center by now and have, you know, a lot of familiarity with it, obviously, we're trying to utilize intelligence to really kinda elevate our police department, and I think we've done that. But, you know, it's a lot of what we talk about is being better. When you really get down to the simplicity of it, like our schools, like, that's really kind of like the bread and butter of why we're here, when you get into the whole protect and serve. And so, we feel like we've identified with our schools a true opportunity that, heaven forbid it ever occur, but we have to train like it will, that we have a major incident at our schools, and we need to be prepared to be so much better than we've ever been before. And so, we know that this technology that exists will help us be legitimately three to five minutes faster in a response to some terrible incident such as an active shooter than really any other agency in the police, in policing in the entire nation would be. And so, what this is doing is giving us access to Mesa Public Schools' cameras throughout the city, they have about 2,500 amongst all their campuses, and being able to utilize those in a live feed will just invaluably allow us to expedite our responses to such an event. So the procedure is pretty simplistic. Other resources that we already have existing in real time, for example, our ability through Live 911 to listen in to 911 calls, we have found that gives us about a three-minute head start from when the person actually, the reporting party, calls 911, that we can listen in and start getting our people en route faster than it would have in the past where it has to go through a call taker than to the officers. But obviously, that's not enough. Just getting, hearing that information and getting our officers there really doesn't accomplish anything if someone's in there creating mayhem inside. In reality, most of the time, you come into a campus and they're brick fortresses, and if someone's shooting rounds in there, it could be an echo effect, it could be ricochets, it could be hard to pinpoint, and obviously, time is of the essence. And so, having cameras allows us to virtually start clearing classrooms, hallways, gymnasiums, whatever they have availability in the campus to where we can identify where the actual threat is, literally in seconds, and have our folks that are now on scene and really would be the most stressful situation ever gonna be in their entire career bypass things that are a waste of time and get straight to the threat and obviously deal with it. And then after that, you know, in our tactics, we have our cursory search would be just kinda going fast and identifying any additional threats. That would take at least 10 to 20 minutes of just moving fast. And then if you think about truly clearing it to where, say, hey, the police can leave and teachers, faculty, and students are safe to come back in and resume your operations, that would take many, many hours to truly go through and dive in. But for us to be able to virtually, in mere minutes, get through there and truly identify, identify that there's no additional or are additional threats, then start saving lives by having our fire department in faster, deeper into the campus, that's kinda like what we're all here for. And this ability gives us that, something that no one else really has. And then if you go to the next part. And then, and really, I do think it's important to highlight is, while we have a lot of assets that are owned by the police department, by the city of Mesa, that we have, I guess I'll say freer access to, we are going to have significantly higher restrictions on how we utilize these cameras. These are not cameras that we are proactive in, that we are, you know, hey, it's a slow day, let's go see if anything's going on in the campus and find a crime. This is when something is in progress right now. Someone is calling 911, the police need to be there. So we're there for that only righteous cause. We're not recording on those cameras. If we need a recording, we will reach out to Mesa Public Schools and they will provide it to us. The only further discussion in that is that, and this is not settled, but we find that there could be benefit that in those live-action incidents, to have a buffer, if you will, that it's kind of buffering for three to five minutes is kind of the numbers we're looking at right now, to where if we get that call, we'll be able to go back for just the last three to five minutes to start pinpointing if the suspect's already inside, that we can pinpoint his direction of travel vehicles, things of that nature. But again, it's not recorded for us, so it's gone. Everything will be in an audit, so if the school was concerned about where we, what cameras have been in, it's all there. It's extremely transparent, and again, it's truly only there for the sincere attempt that if, if we have a true problem, that we have access to those cameras. Other than that, we won't be in them. Yes, sir.
You know, this is always, one of our top priorities is school safety, and we've done, this past summer, the police department did extensive training in a school and settings and training to respond in those settings. I just felt like, as you all, as we said, experienced the opportunity to see the Real-Time Crime Center, and I just thought it would be good to highlight how we're taking this to the next level, or continue to look for opportunities. And appreciate, and I think we need to acknowledge the cooperation with the Mesa School District and working with us on making this available. So I think it just takes our efforts of serving the school and providing safety there to another level. So I just want to make sure the council was aware of this item and what it was intended to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Council questions on this item? Mr. Freeman. Ms. Spilsbury.
Is there any conversations with the other school districts within the city of Mesa? Do they have those cameras like Mesa Public Schools does, and are we looking at using their cameras as well?
We've talked to both Gilbert and Queen, their superintendents have been in here, they've shown some address for us to access the schools that are in our boundaries.
So thank you for doing this. I think this is important for the safety, not only the students, but the teachers and everybody involved. Are the cameras everywhere in the city that you'll be able to access? I mean, in the school districts, or will you be able to access all the cameras within each school? Or how's that gonna work?
So theoretically, yes. It will be up to the school if they choose to pull back specific cameras at their own, you know, direction, they can. But the discretion is that yes, and they're generally placed in hallways and in major rooms. They're not gonna be, obviously, in private locations anyway. So I would say yes.
Okay. I think, if I remember, like, a year, year and a half ago, we discussed this originally, and there might have been a software issue interfacing the Real-Time Crime Center with the school system, and so you've resolved that issue?
We're working through it.
Working through it?
Yep.
Okay.
I think we've found a solution that's gonna help us, but we'll need to test it out, so.
Okay. Could you just walk us through the events if someone calls 911 from a school, and then what happens?
So with this, right now, you know, as I said before, in the past, someone calls 911, they're talking to a call taker who's taking the information, and until they press send on entering the call, dispatch doesn't even know it exists. So then they do that, repeat, have to voice it to patrol, and then they respond. When we utilize Live 911, we're immediately connected as the call taker is connected to the reporting party. We cannot speak, it's a listen-only, but we can start immediately gathering that intelligence. So we can now have the opportunity to bypass all those other steps. So when we come on the radio and we are talking directly to our dispatchers and officers that would be responding, we're saying something to them that doesn't even flash on their screen yet. Dispatch has no clue what we're talking about, but we're gonna say, real time, you're getting an active shooter at this school. And then we'll pause for a second, everyone's gonna be, they're gonna be shocked. They'll start going, giving dispatch a few more seconds before that finally flashes, and then we'll start working together to share the intelligence of what they're getting and what we're getting as we lead our people there, and we can start saying, this is the direction you need to go once you get there.
And I would add is, to me, the response is amazing, but that officer coming on the scene, now they have US their eyes.
Right, wear their eyes.
Giving them direction, like, saying, clearing rooms, like, okay, you don't need to, you need to go down this hall, you don't need to go this location. So to me, that, and it, to me, it's the response, but it's also, I think, a higher level of police officer safety now, because you've got more information than they would have by themselves. Because we train, now, correct me wrong, when an officer, when there's a call at an incident at school, they're not waiting for anybody else. They're going directly to the.
To the threat.
Threat.
Yeah, and I think that's crucial, is that you can obviously go right to the threat and not bypass all the other things. So, again, response time is so important with that. I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brady?
You know, I think this is an important tool for those threats that might happen in the school district, but in general, for the Real-Time Crime Center, do we have enough capacity as we're adding a lot more cameras? You know, I know we're adding cameras at the parks, working maybe with Valley Metro on their camera system there. And so as we expand, do we have capacity at the Real-Time Crime Center among, you know, staffing, software systems that connect and be able to do some proactive things that we do on the city side, along with, you know, the threats that might come in on a daily basis? So just a general question on the Real-Time Crime Center piece.
We are expanding our staffing. We have two professional staff folks who recently started, one full-time and one part-time. We do have three sworn vacancies that we will fill as quickly as we can, but currently, what is our exact staffing?
We will have, we'll have 10.
10.
10 total, as of about three weeks from now.
That were, they were 24/7, or?
We're not quite 24/7 yet, but we're.
24/6.
24/6, okay. Perfect, okay.
Moving towards 24/7. Say that again?
Yeah.
We will.
Yeah, keep the guess.
We can change it if we choose.
Alternate, alternate it. All right, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Belisha?
So you mentioned that the school, Mesa Public Schools, can audit. Is that after, is that assuming that there's been an incident and that you've connected? Or, or describe, is there constant recording of what you're monitoring? I'm just curious, at a high level, in the Real-Time Crime Center, is that always happening so that anytime there is a request, there's, and how long does that last? How long is that kept?
Our IT, as well as the school's IT, will have the ability to go back and say, hey, was this specific camera touched? And on what date and time? And then it links it to the specific ID number from the workstation that used it. So there's always an audit, and in terms of, I mean, I won't try to pretend that I'm an IT person, and it's kinda like, once it's in the computer, it's always there. There's been a few, few times where we've had people ask, like, okay, which operator was there? And it was a lengthy time ago, and there was no problem locating it. So it would just be on their curiosity to say, hey, was this camera touched and when? And I don't think there'll be any issues of being, what's specifically advised, why?
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, anything else on this?
And Mayor, just a reminder that we were able to really accelerate standing up the Real-Time Crime Center with ARPA dollars. So we think it's maybe around $3 million or so that we set aside for that. So that's been able to get this stood up quickly, so.
Well, congratulations. I think the real, and from my perspective, Real-Time Crime Center has exceeded my expectations significantly. I mean, the, the way we respond to vehicular, stolen cars and other crimes, I mean, it's just dramatically more effective than it was previously. And I've had the privilege of other big-city mayors coming to Mesa, asking if they can take a tour, and with a lot of envy, saying that they are hoping to recreate in their cities what we're doing here. So congratulations on, on, I think, being really the model of best practices for this. And it's done, obviously, with a lot of respect for privacy that's worked into the system. And so I'll be encouraging, thank you to Mesa Public Schools, and I'll be encouraging our other superintendents to follow suit as quickly as possible. So thank you very much. Job well done.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Can I tag on, Mayor, to you? I've been elected chair of the Prime Public Safety Crime Prevention Committee for NLC, and I'm gonna promote this in NLC when we go in March, because I think it's critical that this is part of the Real-Time Crime Centers. And you'll be surprised how many large cities in the United States do not have this, and so they're clamoring for this. So it'll help them pursue this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is, I think, Mr. Brady, so we have a presentation on item 9A for Monday's meeting. This is, we're not gonna say CAFR, we're gonna say AFER? ACFER? Thank you, welcome.
Good morning. Okay. Good morning. I'm here to present the results of our audit of the financial statements for our fiscal year 2023. We received an unmodified report, which is a clean opinion, which is what we want. We had no findings this year, any, we know financial statement findings and no single audit findings. When we prepare the financial statements, we follow generally accepted accounting principles, and we follow all the relevant government accounting standards. The next few slides are just gonna be a highlight of the results for our fiscal year 2023. The city's revenue, citywide revenues increased by $85 million when you compare it to fiscal year '22. In the graphs, you see the increase in the governmental and our business type, which is our utility and our airport, and then total city revenues. This slide breaks down just the governmental activities revenues by the major categories. Taxes, our sales taxes, you can see that has continued to increase over the last three years. Our unrestricted and our governmental revenue is the revenues that we receive, state shared revenue, state shared income tax, state shared sales tax, and our vehicle license tax. That increased in fiscal year 2023. I think there's a two-year lag on the revenues that we received from the state, and that's why we've seen that bump in that year. The transfers from the utility fund to the general fund are consistent over the last three years, since the city uses a methodology and a percentage that they use, that's why it keeps it pretty level. And our program revenues, the majority of that is our governmental, or I should say, federal funds that we receive. You can tell that in 2023, they decreased, and the majority of that reason is in '22, we had a lot of the EREP dollars that we received and used for rental assistance, and those dollars, we didn't have as many or hardly anything in 2023, so that's why you see that This is a comparison of our fiscal year, I mean, our net position over the last five years. Our net position is the net result of our assets, less our liabilities, and then our revenues exceeding our expenses, and also rolls into our net position. That has continued to increase over the last five years. You can see it on the governmental sides, on the business-type activities, and overall for the citywide revenues.
And, I know there's been some comments that have been shared with council and council meetings about, concerned about our net position, and sometimes I've had to highlight how to read accounting pages, and I think this demonstrates that we accurately reflected to the council and to our community, is our net position has actually significantly been increasing over the last several years. So I think it goes to our fiduciary, you know, responsibility to the city that we've actually seen it grow, and so I just want to make sure this is highlighted and how we, this is how the audit, the official audit, looks at our net position, which is pretty strong right now. Thank you.
This slide shows our total assets, increased to $5.3 billion, which is just a slight increase over last year. The major components of our assets are our capital assets, which is our buildings, our infrastructure, water plants, treatment plants, and so forth. And then the next big part of our assets is our cash and our investment. This slide shows the breakdown of our cash investments at June 30th of '23. Cash on hand at the bank was $40.8 million. Investment with the local government investment pools, and the cash with custodian. We've just put some money in there for diversity perspectives based on the rates, but those are all very liquid. If we needed to use those funds, we could receive them today if we had that need. So we usually try to keep about that much in available daily funds. The cash with the fiscal agents, $132.7 million, that was money that was provided to the trustee to make our bond payment that was due July 1st. So that is money set aside for the principal and interest that we had already provided to the trustee, and then on July 1st, they paid the bondholders. And then the biggest portion is our long-term investments of just over $1 billion. Those long-term investments are invested from a one-to-five-year perspective, but again, those are also very liquid. If we needed to, we could sell any of those and have access to that. And like I said last year, Mike would like me to remind you that a lot of these funds have already been allocated.
We're not sitting around and.
It's not free money available to spend. Cities' total liabilities are $4.1 billion. The two biggest portions of our liabilities are our long-term obligations, which is our revenue bonds and geo-bonds and revenue obligations, and then the next big chunk is our pension and OPEB liabilities. The next two slides will kinda go a little bit more detail on both of those liabilities. Our long-term obligations decreased slightly. Our general obligation bonds, those are paid through our secondary property tax. Our highway use-of-revenue bonds are paid through the higher use of revenue that we receive from the state. Utility revenue bonds and obligations are all from the utility rates. I will note that the utility revenue bonds, those decreased, but the utility revenue obligations increased, and that's just because we are issuing now obligations as opposed to bonds. So it's just a shift in how we're issuing.
Right. And so, Irma, over time, the utility revenue obligation bonds will continue to increase, the utility revenue bonds.
Will continue to decrease.
So there, we're just, we used to do it by revenue bonds, now we're doing revenue obligation bonds. So you'll just see those kinda switch places over the next several years.
Yes.
Yeah, Ms. Duff.
While we're on here, so this reflects the exercise bonds, ones that are, you know, in works, you know, or utilizing the funds. Is there an earmark or funds that we, there are bond funds that we haven't exercised? We haven't dived into the project, we haven't.
Right.
Started that, so we don't take on, taking out the bond when we don't have the project ready to.
Correct. We have general obligation authorization that we have not used yet. So when we go to the market to issue bonds, we're using that authorization. So on December 7th, we received proceeds, and we issued both general obligation bonds, and we issued some utility revenue obligations. The utility revenue obligations are not authorized, they don't have to be voter authorized, but the obligation, general obligation bonds are.
And council member, also excise tax obligations? So it's just a different source that is backing those obligations? So when it's excise tax, it's usually the sales tax? So they were, so this would be projects like?
This is specifically ASU.
Okay, so this is the ASU outstanding debt that we're paying, we didn't, we're not using secondary property tax to pay it back. Obviously, we're not using utility funds. So this comes from, essentially, it's a general fund pledge, but we pledge the sales tax. So excise tax, sales tax, same thing. So it's just the city, I'll call it the general fund, obligation to pay back that debt over, whatever, the next several years. I think it's, the debt service is about $3?
$2.7.
$2.7 million a year to continue to pay off that 64, 63.8?
That's $43.
Forty, oh, right, because we pay cash, that's right, sorry. About $40 million we're paying off on debt on the issue building.
And on the June 30th, it's $32.9 million.
Yeah.
Ms. Spilsbury.
So to council member Duff's question, even if they're authorized, they're not on this chart until they're.
This is, remember, this is a financial chart showing what we've spent of that year.
Yeah.
The authorization is, so there's two parts. So when we go to the voters, we ask for an authorization to sell debt over multiple years. And so we can go to, we can show the council, right? So each year, each, well, so when we go to the community for a vote, we ask for the authorization. So it's usually a larger amount, $100 million, maybe more than that, to be spent over the next five years. Then annually, we'll come to council and say, okay, we have this authorization, now we wanna sell whatever.
$100 million.
Portion of that, a smaller portion of that, say, a fifth of that, a fourth of that, for the projects that are ready to go in that year. And then we'll do that each year for the next four years. So we're not having to go back to a vote every year, we do a vote to get authorization, the legal authority, to sell the debt each year. And then we'll come to council, we come to council, we just did a couple months ago? Or we didn't do it this year, on the, on the bonds.
October, November, I think, is when we came to council, because we issued them in December.
December, right. So we just did that. And now, in this year, prior to the November election, we're probably, we're gonna have a conversation with council about another authorization for a variety of different projects, and that will set us up. But we, when we come to do that, I think, council, we'll share with you what's the outstanding authorization, what's still pending, that's still sitting out there, and the schedule we have for issuing that debt over the next couple of years, and then what we would ask as far as a new authorization that'll allow us to continue committing projects for the next five years or so in future. Does that help?
Yes. And so this is on our, off of the consent agenda for Monday, there's a hearing that we'll conduct, and certainly, the public will have an opportunity to ask questions at that time. But, I'm sorry, Irma, are you done with your presentation?
I only had one more slide.
Oh, okay, please, please continue. I'm sorry.
And it's just a breakdown of our pension and OPEB liabilities. Breaks down the ASRS pension liability, the public safety, PSPRAS between fire pension, police pension, and the police OPEB. Those four that I just mentioned increased in comparison to the prior year, and the city's OPEB plan liability decreased quite a bit compared to the prior year. One of the things that I'd like to point out on this, the, our unfunded liability is based on many actuarial assumptions. So even though we continue to make our required payments every year, and with PSPRAS, we're actually contributing more than our required payments every year, the, it's based on interest rates, it's based on how the markets do, and it's based on assumptions on healthcare costs, how long someone's gonna live, just various assumptions that determine what our unfunded liability is.
So it's an actuarial study that'll be, that's done regularly. We still are trying to be very aggressive as far as paying down that liability each year. We pay more than the minimum required. We've got a pretty aggressive plan to try to get that paid off in less than the next, I think we're less than 20 years now, 19 years now is where we're at, so.
Wow.
And so that is it. So you're correct, Mayor. On Monday, this is off consent, it's a statute that was a couple years old, and the partner on the engagement will be at the meeting and do a presentation. I'll probably run through the same presentation on the first slide, where I and I talk about the results of the audit, that's where she will speak to specifically things that they're supposed to speak to.
That's great. I think the more we tell the story, the better. So thank you for your work on this, Irma. Council, any additional questions on this before we vote on it on Monday? All right, thank you very much, Irma. Next item on our agenda for this meeting, item 2A, is a presentation and an update on, well, I'm sorry, excuse me. Council, other questions regarding Monday's agenda? Anything stand out that, the only item off the agenda is the financial report, but anything on consent that you have any questions about? All right, thank you. Having said that, then, we'll move on to item 2A for this meeting, is a presentation and update on Mesa's 2050 general plan.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. We're really excited to be here today to present the update on the general plan and the initiation of the public outreach portion of the project. Today, we've got quite a panel of us, we've
We've got Bruce from Logan Simpson, you all know Rachel, myself, and then Jeff. So we all have a piece of this presentation and we're happy to answer any questions as we go along. So for our agenda today, we'll go through the existing conditions study that was completed, a summary of the community engagement, and Bruce will actually review both of those pieces. I'll go through a little bit about the vision setting and how we got to the vision statement. Rachel will then go through the plan structure and the content, and then Jeff will talk through what the public and the council review process looks like over the next 60 days. So just a reminder for the general plan, over and over, we heard various things about how we should approach this plan. We heard that it should be driven by the public input. So we had a very extensive public output outreach program and have taken into consideration what we heard from the public in terms of what the plan should be saying. We wanted to make it user-friendly and easy to understand. It's very much not in planning terms, and if you find planning terms, please let us know, because we want everyone to be able to understand what the plan is saying. We've tried to make it very clear and concise, so there's not a lot of repetition and redundancies. We wanted to make it relevant for all of our city departments. So we've worked really closely with representatives from all of the various city departments who've, because everybody really touches the general plan and its implementation. We wanted to make sure we had a flexible framework because as things change, this is a 10-year plan and we all know things change over that 10-year planning period. And we wanted to have a clear action plan so that we all had a blueprint of where we're going in the future. This is a slide you've seen several times, which gives us our general plan schedule. And as you can see today, we're at the orange piece right in the middle, which is the draft plan, which is now going out for public review and for your review. And then we've got council review, we've got planning and zoning board review, we've got public outreach that's scheduled over the next couple of months. And then we'll have a final plan by, I'm sorry, I cannot read that slide. By the spring of this year and then looking for the November ballot for, at the end of this year, for the public. And so then I'm going to turn it over to Bruce. He'll go through the existing conditions report.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, very proud to be here today and congratulations on having a document in front of you. I'm not going to do the whole 120 pages of the existing conditions report, even though, as Mary said, it's, it's done in a way that's readable for the, for the public, which is nice. But I want to say that is a crucial component of the plan. It's important to understand where you are so you know where you're going. And we can probably jump right in there. But I think it acknowledges where Mesa sits in the region. And you just saw your economic numbers, but also how you're pre-positioned in the Phoenix Valley to be one of the major players, both in the, in the state, but in the nation as well. And it acknowledges your size and that you are a mega-city and growing, 500,000-plus and continuing to grow. And with that comes a big city opportunities that go, that go with that, that you're a major housing provider and that housing stock and how that's formed and shaped for the future is critical and that your incomes are slowly, you know, rising as you go. And it's an exciting position to be in. Also, just, it's easy to focus on the flashy stuff, which is always easier to talk about within these existing conditions. But there's also acknowledgement that with this larger city comes the importance of making sure that we are providing our utilities in the right way, that when we look at water, we're reducing the per capita use continually as we go forward, to make sure they're making efficient use of our resources, that you're investing in your schools like you're talking about today, to make sure that we're continuing to push those levels upwards. Also, in terms of happiness and mental well-being and pride in cities, clearly investment in events that celebrate Mesa as a whole. And then lastly, there's the basics about utilities and so on, making sure that we're pushing towards sustainability as you are with both EV charging to recycling demonstrates a continued push in that direction. So definitely take the time to go through that. I know you'll be working through those sections sort of one by one. Community engagement, I can talk about for the next two hours. I won't. But, you know, for me, that's an easy read within the plan itself. It is a requirement by state law to make sure that you accept, and you did already, a public involvement plan from the basis of what we've done to date. And, but before I sort of move any further, I want to sort of recognize the General Plan Advisory Committee, the GPAC. And I think we have one member here from the GPAC, if I was wrong. So thank you so much for your hard work on this and everything that you've done. So great committee. Also, I wanted to acknowledge that there are four other planning efforts. So in terms of public involvement, you have this plan, which allows anybody to input on any subject. So that's great, but you also have four plans that are going, ongoing at the same time and which gives other people opportunity to talk about that as well. But overall, 6,000 people have participated, over three online surveys, 65 events, and this is just people who are actively engaged. It's not people who walk by and said, hey, you know, great job, or good to see you, or at event, and so on. These are people that are actively inputting. If you think about some of those events, it covers everything from community conversations to being out at the markets, to online technology, to urban labs, immersive events, to the plan showcase, which is coming up in February and March. So public involvement and community involvement never ends. We're still looking for our citizens' input, including the draft plan that's, that's live as we speak, so. In the end, this plan has--
I'm sorry, before you go ahead.
Sorry, Bruce, can I ask just a quick question on that, on the engagement? I'm not trying to get us off track, but the 6,000 people and plans that you've worked on in the past and how that compares? This is not a question of your efforts because I know you all have really tried to engage the community, but it's really a question about our, our community. How engaged are we?
Yeah, that, you know, I'll try to do this diplomatic, but make sure I'm straightforward about this, is our involvement has been good, and I would say good and above average, so pretty good. Because, but I'll just make an observation, because what I've noticed out there, things are pretty good in Mesa. And because you don't have anything crashing right now, we're not getting the hordes of people going, you know, this is awful and so on. And that's where you get a lot of engagement usually. The engagement we've gotten has generally been positive engagement. There's been some critical comments of, hey, we'd like to see this, or I wish this was changed, and that we take very, very seriously. But I would say the engagement has been, compared to other plans, very, very good. The main measure of success that I think is in addition to those numbers is some of the techniques that have been used. So the variety of techniques of standing there at a booth and just talking to a family who doesn't know anything about a general plan is one method. To making sure that we have events in different languages has, has been wonderful. Making sure that we're spatially, just having events in every district has been, I think, a success as well. And if you look at some of those spatial distribution maps that are in the appendix, that's, that is another keystone of that. Lastly, is trying new things. So, you know, talking to people, that's one of the best ways, but also experimenting with new, new technologies that may appeal to that gap that never gets involved, those high school students and so on, has been a wonderful experience, especially the acknowledgement of how bright our youth is in this community. So I think those are the measures of success and public involvement has been pretty good. You bet. So in the end, you know, the plan has to represent the community, and this is one where you go back and read it. You can definitely go one-to-one between the public involvement appendix and, you know, information like this, and then some of those key chapters. And I think it really does represent what people want to see, which is, you know, housing affordability, preserving their neighborhoods, new places to go, and then a focus on redevelopment and reinventing some of those spaces within Mesa. So definitely representative of the plan of the community itself.
Thank you, Bruce. And so we take all of that information, we look through our old, our current plan, the 2040 plan, we look at the, the vision and the objectives in that plan, we look at the policies and the strategies in that plan, we take the input that we've gotten from the public, we look at best practices around the country, we've looked at our existing conditions and our trends and looked at the city council initiatives. And the result of that is what we have as a vision statement and the guiding principles, which I believe we presented back in October of last year. And so from that vision and guiding principles, we then are writing each of the chapters of the plan, the strategies and the actions that will help us to implement it. So the vision statement that was prepared is that Mesa is a safe, desirable, family-centered community that celebrates our heritage and innovative spirit, seeks economic prosperity for all, prioritizes quality places, and offers choices where we live, work, play, and learn. And so everything we've done in this plan is really feeding back up into this vision statement so that we all have a place that we're trying to get in this 2050 plan. And so what I'm going to do now is Rachel's going to talk through the five chapters of the plan, three main chapters, the intro and the implementation, and then we'll go into a little bit with Jeff of where we go from here.
All right. Good morning, Mayor, Council. So I'll be giving you an introduction of what you're going to see in the plan, but I just want to give you a preface that we will be coming back to you at future study sessions to go into detail each one of these chapters, once you've had a chance to review, so that we can really discuss them and get your feedback along the way and answer any questions that you have. So the general plan is, it's broken up into a couple of components. We have, and you'll see you have your bound documents in front of you today. So there's three different pieces to this. We have the general plan itself, which has the five chapters that Mary described, and I'll go into detail about those. But you also have your supporting documents, which consists of the appendices, so that is the existing conditions report and the public participation report. And then you have an action plan. And this is really the implementation for the general plan. And it is done a little bit differently in this plan than we did in the 2040 plan in that it is a standalone document. And that was done on purpose so that this could be a living document that could be updated over time. And I'll go into more detail about what this looks like as well. But this is based on the guiding principles in the plan, and this specifies specific actions to accomplish those strategies and the guiding principles. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that--
We haven't handed them out.
That they haven't been handed out yet.
Just so you know, it's a package of three documents.
Yeah, all three, so we'll keep passing it down.
I'm referencing documents that you didn't get yet. I apologize.
We were going to hand them out.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'll give a second to get those handed out. I'm sorry. So now you will see you have three documents. The general plan, the appendices, and the action plan. Okay, so going through the general plan, this is organized in five chapters, and it's organized around the three core values that really came out of the public engagement. So as Mary and Bruce were describing, there were major themes that came out of the public input, and those are categorized into the land, the people, and the economy. And those compose the main sections of the plan. We do have kind of our standard two chapters, which are the introduction and our implementation chapter as well. So chapter one, as I said, is kind of a standard chapter. It's where we're introducing what is a general plan. So what is, what is a general plan? What's the purpose? What's the importance of the general plan? We go into community engagement and give a brief description of community engagement. There's not much detail because in the appendices, we have that community engagement report that really dives down into those events and what we heard specifically. The introduction goes over a brief history of Mesa and its development over the years. So by era, kind of what happened in Mesa to make it to what we are today. We get into some of the key statistics about the city. So what is our population? What's the square miles of the planning area? Those sort of statistics. Introduces the plan structure in the introduction so that people kind of have a roadmap of how to use and read the plan. And then it introduces our vision statement, the core values, the guiding principles, and explains what those different items are so that people understand what a guiding principle is and what an action is. As I go through this presentation, you're going to see some asterisks on some of these items on these slides. Those are the required elements per state statute, so I just wanted to point that out in case you had a question as we go through. So chapter two, the people. This contains four sections, which talks about great neighborhoods, history, arts and culture, and our history, arts and cultural resources. It talks about our human services and public safety. Chapter three contains four sections, which talks about strategies for housing, our circulation and mobility, parks and open space, and land use and urban design. Each of these chapters, I'll step back a little bit, they're organized in a very similar way where they have each an introduction to the chapter itself, and then they break out into these different sections where each has a guiding principle and it has strategies. So it goes into detail about the strategies, and then those will tie into the action plan. But the one that's a little different here is chapter three, the land. And that varies a little bit in organization because this has our future land use plan in it. And I know you're very, very familiar with what this concept is because of land use planning and all of those cases that come before you. Some of the terminology you'll see in this is a little different. So the future land use plan really talks about the future land use in Mesa and what that should be. And we are changing it a little bit from what it was in the 2040 plan, so taking a little bit of a different approach. And instead of character types, you're going to hear this term place types. But essentially, they are the same thing. It is a future land use category that describes the future land uses, the zoning that's appropriate, and kind of the character and feel of those places. So the future land use plan consists of a few different components. It is the place type descriptions, the place type maps, which is the top map you'll see on the right of this presentation, a growth strategy map, and consistency criteria. And the growth strategy map is on the bottom here on the right. So as I mentioned, place types describe the character of the place. It talks about your typical land uses and the target of those land use mixes. So how much of it should be commercial versus residential when we talk about a, you know, a type of land use that is envisioned for a mixed use. It talks about the desired density and intensity of the development. So how dense do we want the housing and how intense are those commercial or industrial uses? And then it talks about the urban design characteristics of that place and what it really should look and feel like. The place type map is the actual depiction of where those future, or where those place types are located within the city. So it is very, you know, consistent with what you see today with our character area map. And going back, that top picture, that's what that looks like.
Rachel, if I could add, the one thing you'll see that's a little bit different from the character areas is that those boundaries tended to be more bubbles, where you'll notice now with the place types that we're actually looking at specific parcels. So we're kind of, instead of having them cross over parcels, we're actually getting a little bit more specific. That's the only difference, I would say, in the mapping.
So growth strategy map, this is a new concept in this general plan, and this is really meant to, to be a companion to the place type maps and to give another level of analysis when considering future land use changes. So the growth strategy map provides guidance on development in terms of four different strategies. Those are conserve, sustain, enhance, and grow. So we have, you know, we have identified areas within the city for these various strategies, and they will help inform how we make decisions when we have development come in. So our conserve areas are areas within the city that should be preserved. So we largely want them to remain as they are today. And if you think about a lot of our parks and open spaces, if you think about our historic districts, some of our heritage neighborhoods, those are places that we really want to see-- districts, some of our heritage neighborhoods, those are places that we really want to see conserve, that we don't want to have any large-scale change occur to. The next category is sustaining. So these are areas within the city that we really want to encourage to remain in generally the same condition that they are today, so this is a lot of our residential neighborhoods. So we don't really want to see an all-over change in these places. We might see a kind of incremental mild redevelopment, but no overall redevelopment in those areas. Enhance areas are areas right now that are in good condition, and we want to continue to see them develop over time and to kind of refresh and revive themselves. So if you think about a lot of our group commercial centers, over time, we want to see them improve and, you know, renew themselves. And then we have areas within the city that we want to see grow. So these are vacant parcels, there are parcels that are transitioning, that are really either blighted or ready for redevelopment. So those are the grow areas within the city.
Yes.
Yes. So on the land within the plan, and I'll definitely read it, do we have any goals or objectives to preserve a certain amount of open space? Some cities do, like we want X amount, 25% open space within our city, or something like that. Do we have any goals as far as green space, open space, that we're trying to preserve within the city to have the balance?
Mayor, Councilmember Duff, there are no specific metrics in the plan for the amount of open space, but we do have them on this growth strategy map, identified as places that we would like to conserve. So Chapter Four is the economy, and this contains four sections as well, and they describe strategies for economic development, environment, conservation, energy, and water, and our public facilities and services. And then Chapter Five describes implementation of the plan. So this talks about our various implementation tools that we have, such as our city code, design guidelines, other plans in the city. This section introduces the action plan, and it also describes the general plan amendment So getting a little bit more into the action plan, so as I mentioned, this is a standalone implementation tool, and it provides specific actions that various city departments can take to implement the various strategies in the plan. It was, it's intended to be updated periodically. Per state statute, every year, we are required to give our elected officials an update on the general plan and the implementation. So we specifically wanted to design this action plan, so that it could be updated very easily every year, and it would be very clear about what has been accomplished and where we are at in that process. And it's also flexible enough that as we see priorities changing and conditions changing, that we can remove or add different actions into that plan.
I'm sorry, Rachel, did you say we're required by state statute every year?
That's correct.
To give an update on how we've implemented the plan?
Uh huh.
Really? Okay. Sorry, do we have those? Okay.
Okay, so moving on, so, and as a reminder, this ties into the other plans that are taking place right now, so a lot of those actions, they're more general in nature, but a lot of them tie to the planning efforts that are happening with the transportation master plan, water resource plan, so we collaborated with those departments and those planning teams to really pull up their specific actions and strategies into the general plan itself, but in a more general way. And I'm going to pass it over to Jeff now.
Well, thank you, Rachel. I think Bruce did a great job of kicking off the public engagement in our approach, and we realized with such a large diversity that we have to have multiple methods for people to hear about the plan, and then different ways for people to respond and meet their needs wherever they're at. Today does begin the 60-day public review period, that is required by state law, and that gives residents, council, and also state agencies a chance to look at the plan, to provide input, which then we will look at and make modifications as we see fit. The 2050 general plan is, and is now, as of this morning, available at tomorrowsmesa.com. What you'll see, Council, as you go out there and as you direct residents there, there's a few different ways to engage. One, there's a digital platform called Conveo, and it essentially allows residents to pull up the plan and to, oh, we're going out there right now, awesome, there it is. And, you know what, we didn't practice this, but this is good. Let's go take a look. This is Conveo, this is a platform that allows residents to flip through the plan, page by page. And it's neat, because as they see different things that they have comments on, they can just click on the page and add a comment box, and all of that's automatically collected for us, and then we're able to take all that feedback and really make sense of it and implement it in a way that I think will be very effective. So we're jumping through chapters right now, but if you just scroll down the page, that's where all, you can just go page to page, there you go. So just like you're seeing in your paper plan, it's all been digitized, and lots of people, there we go, you can leave your name, you can leave a comment. So that is up there. There's also a survey. We realize some people don't want to go through the entire plan, I think that's, most people are very busy. And our survey is tailored in a way that gives residents multiple avenues. One avenue is, I don't have any time, I didn't read the plan, but I want to give you feedback, that's great. The survey allows people to do that. There's another way that, hey, I have a lot to say on everything, that's great. The survey will customize itself based on what they tell us they want to do, and it will allow them more chances to provide feedback. We also have a write-in option for folks who don't want to do anything digitally, that's great, you can send snail mail, we'll take that. And we also are going to have stations at each of the public libraries, and these will have a paper copy of the plan, we'll have access to the digital plan, and there'll be information about what is a general plan in two minutes, easy, quick, getting people up to speed about what we're doing, why we're doing it, and why we would like their input. We're also exploring other options to make it even more inclusive and equitable for anybody to participate. So we'll be bringing more ways to participate online as we go.
I'm sorry, Jeff, before you leave the screen, so to link to that feedback tool, is it www.tomorrowsmesa.com?
Yes, that is correct, Mayor.
Great.
Jeff, is this available in Spanish as well, or?
So Mayor, Councilmember Duff, what we are doing is, we are relying on Conveo and the technology on people's browsers to handle that translation, and this really is a product that Bruce, you've used a lot more too, we're using it through Logan Simpson. Can you tell us a little bit about some of the functions that would allow this to translate other than having the browser automatically convert?
Yeah, that's the main thing, we can look into that, Jeff, you know, today, and make sure that there's other functionalities, but yeah, there's, we usually rely on folks' browsers to make that translation, but we can look at making some tools that are maybe, make it a little more accessible. Survey, definitely, is an easier one, but we want to make sure that the document's available in both languages.
I noticed, videos in Spanish. I noticed that there's a Google thing that has a language you can choose, but it only changes the menu items, it doesn't change the documents, and I think this is an embedded document, so the, I don't know if a browser is really going to be able to translate it, since it's not, I don't know enough about that, but I noticed I just changed it to a different language, it changed the menus, but not the document, but...
When I went to pull it up, it allows you to go into this.
Should have.
Looks like it allows you to do that.
And Mayor, Councilmember Duff, we will definitely dive right into that, and we'll start testing and looking into it.
We'll do some triple testing, so.
Yeah. And I think it doesn't hurt also to provide instructions there, when people get right on the landing page, how do I find this in Spanish? And we can make that more obvious and clear, we can work on that.
Yeah. And then just as an output for the council members, just on the technology, it will allow people to put in their comments, they won't be able to see each other's comments, and we can always change that if we want, but right now, it's so that you can individually input with your own thoughts, unbiased, about what you'd like to see, what we'd like to enhance, if the survey's not deep enough for you, if you want to get right into wording and so on. What's nice is it categorizes by people's name and provides a report to you that's pre-summarized. So that's the benefit of this, is to make sure that every person's voice counts, whether they do the survey, or whether they are tapping into a document, you're able to categorize all the comments.
How would I see that?
You get a report. You bet.
So moving down, just like we did for Mesa Urban Labs, we will have one public meeting in each of the districts. And at this point, those are scheduled, we'll be working with your council coordinators to find dates that are open on your calendars, and also that we think will be great for the public to attend. And those are scheduled for late February, we'll have those dates, I'm hoping by the end of the day, we have one holdout location, I'm trying to lock down, but all the other ones are approved and are looking good, so we'll get those put up online and make it easy for residents to know how to attend a meeting in your district. We also have social media that's customized for your council coordinators, which we'll be sending to them in a packet, so that they can let your followers on social know how to come to a meeting. In terms of letting people know, Councilmember Goford, I like your question, how are we doing? How can we make this even more well-known and get more people engaged? We have a very robust integrated media strategy, and we've worked closely with the Public Information Office and Anna and her team, and we have, of course, social media, print, we have newspaper buys, we're working directly with HOAs to supply them content for their local newsletters. We do have out-of-home print, where one of those is 20, we have 20 busted shelters that we have marketing up for, and I mentioned the libraries, but we're continuing to expand that, that's just what's going live as of today, and you, hopefully, when you're scrolling around on the internet, you'll see an ad pop up for one of the meetings and how to participate. So we're trying to really get the word out and get as many Masons who want to participate aware, and then engaged in the process.
Mr. Freeman. And then Alicia and Julie.
So is there a way we can integrate our high schools, high schoolers, you know?
That's my question. Because, you know, most of the schools have like a peach jar, sorry.
Well, go ahead.
It has a way to market, and it's called Peach Jar.
You have to go to the school district.
For sure.
Yeah, exactly. I think some of our high schoolers would be, their teachers would be more than willing to have some of this presentation as part of their program.
It's a matter of the school district giving us permission to use Peach Jar, so we'll work.
Well, ASU mix, you know, we had the students come to the presentation, and I was there, and that was pretty awesome for them to look at in real, at a real time, but I know Jeff was there, it wasn't quite what I really wanted, but it was okay. What do you think?
I thought it was amazing, but that's, I was, I mean, I did, I thought it was amazing, but I...
Technology was amazing, I'll agree.
Yeah, well, and just a neat experience for the kids to like, talk through it and think about what that looks like. So that was going to be my suggestion, is can we circle back to those particular kids that came to it, and give them a copy and see what they think? I don't know.
Mayor, Council, the way you think. So I have a, this isn't one of our slides, but I have a separate engagement tool list of all the ways we're going out. Peach Jar is right on here, it's definitely one we're working with, and I have a contact at MPS who knows that we're going to supply a flyer, and we do, of course, have all the email contacts from the many schools that participated, and we'll be reaching out to them to say, all right, you participated, now you get to see what you helped create, and that'll be going out to the schools. I'm hoping, it's a very good point Mr. Brady made, it kind of depends on how much they allow us to participate, but we're going to let them know that what they've been working on and helped make is now public, and we hope to find ways to engage.
Well, and that's why I think, as a mother of Mesa Public Schools for the last 20 years, the Peach Jars get a little bit much, so I don't know that that's super effective. Obviously, let's do it, let's try to do it, but those are very easy to dismiss. So that's why I like the idea of actually going back to these students and teachers and suggesting that they get copies of it, or that they go through it in a class period or some, I mean, I think it could be really beneficial, and I do think Mesa Public Schools would be open to something like that. It wouldn't take a ton of time, maybe one class period or something. I think we should pinpoint those kids who are already engaged and that are already excited about this, and kind of saw a different vision. Otherwise, most of the high school kids have no clue what it is, they don't know what a general plan is. I mean, not that we shouldn't try to educate all of them too, but the kids that were already engaged are going to be more powerful in this process, I think, so. Can I ask my other question while I'm talking? Thank you for all of your work on this, by the way, it's been like enormous, I've been to the events, and that's just my event in my district, so timesing that by six and all the stuff that you guys have been doing is amazing. Mary, you were talking about how they're no longer bubbles, and they're down to, you know, actual lines and boundaries, which is really different. So I was just wondering, do you have any sense of like, how drastic those changes are in getting rid of bubbles and making lines?
Mayor, Councilmember, we essentially followed the same areas. Some areas may change in terms of what their place type would be, but when you look at those, if they, if the bubble crossed over a parcel, what we would do is identify which of the place types that parcel should be, and so we actually looked at it from a parcel-by-parcel perspective. And one of the things that Rachel talked about, we're trying to find ways to create consistency in ways that may be more than just that place type, and so you'll see in the last part of that implementation, or the implementation chapter, there's that whole process for how consistency can be determined, so that we're not stuck with just that bubble.
Okay. And so is that, when you're talking about best practices, is that something you've seen other places?
Yes.
That they've gotten rid of the bubble?
Mayor, Councilmember, yes.
Okay. I'm just thinking through like, how that will affect zoning cases and different types of, you know, redevelopment and stuff like that, so.
Yeah. And Mayor and Councilmember Spillsbury, you'll see that there is a little bit more detail in the place type mapping than there was in the 2040 general plan, because if you look at that map out southeast, it was very generic, and they kind of just overlaid two types, and weren't quite sure what was going to happen out there. So it goes into a little bit more detail, especially in those type of areas, about what that could be.
Okay. And the other question I had is for the development map, is that future development map, or whatever you call it?
Growth strategy map, yes.
So the growth strategy, there you go. I don't have it in front of me, but the parts that say like, growth, and, sorry, I shouldn't have it in front of me, conserve, sustain, enhance, grow, you know, just kind of looking at my district and looking at, since I'm familiar with some of those areas, does this mean anything? Is it just kind of like a planning type of thing? It's not, it's, if there was an enhance area that we think should be a grow area, like, does that make a difference? Or is this just kind of where, with economic development, where we're looking at things?
Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, so this will be used in our evaluation of land use proposals. If there was a desire change to the map, that's discussed in the implementation chapter and can be done at the direction of city council and the city manager. So Chapter Five will describe the process for that, but for the most part, it remains as is, and it is a, it really is a tool to make those land use decisions.
Because, so who would I, who would I maybe talk to when I'm looking at some of my areas on here, that maybe I would flip the grow and enhance on some of these? So like, who could I talk to to find out why they made them which color or whatever?
Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, I would reach out to planning staff, we can, either Jeff or Mary and I, and we can go over any specifics with you.
To see like, what you were thinking when you made those choices on that.
And Mayor, Councilmember, that's what this 60 days is for.
Okay.
So that if you see something that you're like, wait a minute, maybe this should be this way and not this way, that we can have those conversations.
So I guess that's why I was wondering, how big of a deal is it? What color it is? Is it a big enough deal to make those kind of changes? Or to ask about them at least?
Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, I would take a look at it, because it will influence how we evaluate projects when they come in.
Okay.
But it's not, I mean, it starts the conversation.
Correct, right.
So this is not a concrete constitutional, but it does persuade the first recommendation of the staff in the future would be, well, this is, in this, it's either growth or something else, so.
That's right.
That's just kind of where we lean to, because sometimes, I mean, this does become very important for the staff, once it's approved, right? It becomes a document that we go to and say, okay, here's what was approved by the voters, here's where we start the recommendation. Now, does that mean it can't change? No, because Mary said at the beginning, and I keep telling this to staff, you know, it's a ten-year agreement. What we think the world looks like today will be very different four or five years from now, and certainly eight and nine years from now. So we have to be, recognize that, but I think we want to get off to a good start, that we recognize there'll be conversations about growth patterns and the types of growth, and it'll be different than what it is today, but that's okay.
So the placemaking, would you say, is more important than this map, though? Right? Like, that would be more important of what those are categorized?
The place, Mayor... The place, Mayor, councilmember, the place types?
Place type.
Place type. All these terms, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah. So, the place type map would be much more important as far as which of those parcels are what category? Okay, maybe not.
Mayor, councilmember, they both go hand-in-hand when we evaluate. So, if you're in a conserve area and you want to demolish everything and turn it into a grow area, we would just have to go through that modification process. So, as Mr. Brady said, and I'm just using that because it's one end of the spectrum to the other, if something like that were to happen because eight years from now, things are different, we would just have to go through the process to make that modification.
Yeah. And Mayor, councilmember Spillsbury, maybe I can give you an example of how this will be used. So, you may have an area around downtown where, you know, it's downtown and we have various zoning and intensities that say we want this to be an urban environment. However, we have historic districts within our downtown that we want to preserve. So, we have the place type that says, you know, this is downtown, this is the look, the feel. But if someone wanted to come in and demolish a house, a neighborhood, and put in a five-story building, we'd look at that growth strategy map and we could say, "Well, no, this is an area that is meant to be conserved." So, despite the fact that your place type says it is a urban environment, it's really not appropriate on this parcel. Does that help kind of explain how they go together?
Yeah, and I probably, I guess, should know this. Do we have a growth strategy map currently?
We do not.
So, this is all new?
This is new.
And do we have anything like this?
Currently, we do not.
Nothing, okay. Okay. I can see how it could be helpful. I just have some questions on certain things that I'm looking at on the map, so.
Yeah, definitely. And we'll be coming back to go over these chapters in more detail. So, once you have a chance to really read through, feel free to write down a list of questions and we can go into it in a lot of detail and explain.
Okay, thanks.
I think the growth strategy is important because I think right now, as I see it, our growth strategy map comes in externally from development that says, "We think this should be here even though you've designated it that," right? So, I think this will be a better tool and more predictable and set expectations both internally and externally. So far, I mean, I haven't read it yet, but that's what I would expect. So, the million-dollar question for me is how does this then work with and affect our master transportation plan? So, we've done all this work to say, "Here's a place type. Here's, and a place type means this is the character, this is the intensity, this is the urban design." So, and what's precedent? You know, when we set that, does the master transportation plan get to trumpet because it's not a high enough level of service? That's my question.
That is a million-dollar question. So, good morning, Mayor, council. So, we have been working and I think we tried to convey this last month with the general plan and we've really been waiting for all these placemaking tools to be in place so that then we can then look at our network and say, "What type of land use is there today? What type of land use is planned for this area? And what type of network do we need?" So, we are trying to integrate land use and transportation more and more.
Great. So, not to get too technical, but when the plan says this is the place type, the transportation will follow, right?
Yes. So, we all have, I think, going back to our presentation, we talked about having a toolbox or things we can select from. And, you know, some of those, when we're talking about speed limits or lane widths or, you know, facility types for different users, that really depends on land use. And so, we'll have a toolbox to say, not necessarily this is exactly what it's going to look like, but these are the types of transportation amenities we would expect in this land use type.
With this place type, yeah, which would, I think, make your job a little...
Well, let's be careful though. You have to be, transportation can deal with, you know, more regional, you know, issues that it's trying to solve.
Sure.
And then there can be neighborhood issues that it's addressing. So, I don't know that, you know, when you talk about place types, well, when you're trying to develop a major arterial that's connecting miles of streets or miles of, you know, the city, it's going to cross multiple types of uses. And so, that has to be considered.
Yeah.
And so, but if we're talking about a neighborhood inside a subdivision, well, that's going to be very different. And you may be looking at, as it crosses from a residential neighborhood to commercial and it's just a collector street, that may be treated differently than a major arterial. So, I don't think the same rule applies for every street that you're going to, I mean, because there could be multiple place types along a major arterial, right, that runs across the city or even expanding a freeway. If we're trying to expand the 24, we're trying to do intersections at the 60 and Alma School or something like that. So, I think there's a scale here that we have to work about.
So, I think what I'm hearing though is that we're going to base these place types on our existing transportation network. No? I mean, I would hope that's not, but that's sort of what you say. We have these arterials. I mean, how can you, how can you make a place type that's sort of this?
The place types have been done, that's being done right now through the general plan exercise of how land is being used and described the uses. What I'm saying is when you layer over the transportation plan, it will consider that, but the transportation will connect multiple varieties of place types and it's trying to serve a purpose that may be not specific to that place type, but may be trying to figure out how to connect a variety of place types across the city. That's what I was trying to say.
And Mayor, councilmember go forth, I chime in here too and say that we've been coordinating since day one with the transportation plan, many, many hours of, even tweaking our process. We had an idea of our place types way, Bruce is going to say, way earlier than we typically would do so that we could get them early ideas so that they could start churning through their process. But they do, to a certain extent, they relate. And transportation, when they were putting their plan together, they knew to a pretty good extent, 80%, I'd say, of what those place types were going to be so that we don't have that situation where we're expecting a huge growth in an area and there's little tiny feeder streets, right? There is some type of coordination happening between the two plans and they do speak to each other. Is that fair to say, Eric?
Yes.
Are there place types though that we've identified that transportation may need to change a little bit to support that place type? Or no, have we not gone so far as to say something like that?
I guess, what do you mean by transportation change?
Well, if you've identified a place type that's maybe more dense, more urban and has a certain character, but say the transportation doesn't support that sort of context, will we try to change that? Or are we not, the transportation plan doesn't go so far as to say, "We've identified some areas that might need changing to support the context of the place that it's serving."
Mayor, councilmember go forth. I think from planning's perspective, when we were creating the place types, we didn't see that there were places where the road network wouldn't be able to support the density. I think where the opportunity lies is within the ability to create different street sections that are maybe more appropriate to lower intensity place types. It seems in my opinion that our street network has the capacity to handle the densities proposed.
I, can I tang in on that? So, in fact, an area that is more dense needs more alternative transportation in order to handle the congestion and not looking at amplification of vehicle use. So, like urban centers are the most dense area, right? And so, what are those opportunities for navigating that area? And what is the opportunity to go from that urban area, urban center, to another urban center on alternative means transit or active transportation? Also, in neighborhood centers, what are the opportunities to not be in the car, to be able to go to the corner store and making sure that that's supported, that we become people-oriented in areas that are neighborhood or dense urban centers? That's more of a statement. But would it be possible to have the growth strategy map and the place type land use map kind of overlay or shadowed? Or, I mean, is there a way that on the, I keep on flipping back and forth, you know, with urban centers and growth areas and...
Mayor, council...
Is there a way to kind of shadow that?
Councilmember Duff, we can look at different hatching to see if that's, how readable that is. We can look at that.
Even on just a digital means through a GIS system or something like that where you can look at it, overlay it on it and then click it off not to confusion. I know it'll be really a lot to go over there, but I keep on trying to go back and forth to see what it means overall.
Mayor, council, we can definitely look at some kind of overlay to provide that. And probably digitally it'll look better so you can zoom into the areas you want.
Thank you. I just want to say thanks, Eric, for coming up. This is a conversation that is not going to be a question-answer done. You know, I recognize that. This is an ongoing conversation. I appreciate that you all have worked so many hours and so closely together with the general plan and the transportation plan. I think that's fantastic. I can tell that that's happening and I appreciate this dialogue and...
It is, and we appreciate that. It's a start and I think we have to identify, I think what we're trying to identify is what we can do with, you know, the existing network that we have and identify those locations that we expect change to happen over the next 25 years. And how do we do that? Because we can't do that, like Mr. Brady said, on a parcel-by-parcel basis or even a quarter mile at a time. So, we have to find locations that we expect change and those, in reality, are probably going to have to be CIP projects to affect the change that we're looking for.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Any additional comments or questions? I'll just add my thanks to all of the folks involved in getting us to this point. I mean, now, the funny thing is now the real work begins because it's, having a conceptual discussion is far different from, you know, criticizing, critiquing and having something to jump off of and talk about. So, that, this is a very exciting place to be. And I know there's a lot of great work, a lot of smart work, a lot of innovative things. The augmented reality, the virtual reality thing and all the meetings we've had that I've been very impressed by. And what we've got is something that's very attractive, very easy to read, very compelling and engaging. So, I think we all need to be cheerleaders of not necessarily every detail in this book, but of getting people to react to this and inviting more engagement. So, that's what the next 60 days are for. So, let's look for every opportunity we can to invite people to give us their thoughts on this. And hopefully, we'll get something on the ballot that the voters will approve of this in November. So, thank you very much for all the great work that's gone into this.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Moving on, next item on our agenda. Item three is to acknowledge receipt of various minutes. Is there motion to that effect? Thank you, councilmembers Spillsbury and Vice Mayor Hureti. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Ron, please thank your committee, all right? Thank you very much. Item four is current events and conferences attended. I know we've been off for a while, probably a lot to talk about. Who would like to go first?
Julie? Well, my mic's still on. I'll go first. I'll just mention a few things. I was able to go speak with the residents of Alvesta Village and give them an update on what is happening. I always love to do that in my district. I attended the Mesa Police Department Fourth Quarter Promotions and Awards Event. That's always a fun thing to attend and especially the life-saving awards are just really inspiring. Councilmember go forth and Duff and I got to be panelists at the Mesa Academy eighth grade, I don't know what they called it. They all came up with projects and we got to give feedback on those and that was very impressive. Their skills were incredible for eighth grade. And we even had a employee's daughter, one of the presenters, which was really fun. We didn't give her extra points for that though, although she, her group did win on mine, so.
Was that Hacktivate?
What? No.
Was it Hacktivate or something different?
It's not Hacktivate.
Junior High Academy version.
Oh, good, yeah.
It was, it was really impressive. That was a fun event to be a part of. And I got to speak at the Mesa Fire and Medical Department Paramedic Program graduation that had five different departments with people that did that. And they do that program while they're working as firefighters, right?
No. They get, they get paid to be...
Yeah, no, I mean, it's amazing though that they're...
Well, they're off-duty.
Yeah, but they're, I mean...
They used to be off-duty. Now, we pay them.
Yeah, this is the last...
Oh, is this the last of the, okay. So, this is the last of the two grit ones. In the future, we're going to be paying for them to go to class.
Just like you did me.
Yeah.
Anyways, thanks for asking me to speak at that on behalf of, I guess, the mayor who wasn't there, so, who couldn't make it. And then I think a lot of us also read books at the Mesa Book Festival, which is always a fun activity as well, so, that's it for me. Then I had a wedding.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Not mine.
Vice Mayor?
Okay, just to give a shout-out to everybody that donated to our toy drive in December, collected over $10,000 for Banner Children's Hospital in West Mesa to fill up their toy closet. So, thank you to the East Valley Firefighter Charities, the Dobson Ranch Golf Course, AT&amp;T and many other companies that helped collect toys for those kids that are staying overnight or during the weeks at the hospital. So, just a big shout-out for that. It's my sixth annual drive. I think it's like the 10th annual that my predecessors started before, so, thank you for everybody that donated there, so.
Thank you. Mr. Summers?
I'm just going to mention one or two things. First of all, had the opportunity with Mr. Brady to tour the AZ Labs, which is a former Air Force Research Lab. That happened when Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport was Williams Air Force Base. The Air Force Research Lab is a secure facility, does work on behalf of the Department of Defense. A lot of research jobs, a lot of engineers there. It's, we talk about this area and the opportunity it has to create some significant high-wage jobs in advanced manufacturing. This is a key piece that started quite a long time ago. And to see some of the work that I can't discuss happening there is a really important component to our national defense and our national security. So, it's an exciting, it's just an exciting opportunity that's happening here and I hope to see more investment in that from our city and from the state of Arizona as well. And as a reminder, today, we are going to be unveiling Mesa's first electric fire truck. I bring that up because it's at 11 o'clock. But I've been getting text messages from friends and acquaintances about this, most of which are, of course, the firefighters that I work with in Phoenix. But I actually had somebody who is not a firefighter from the Wales, UK, who is an acquaintance of mine, text me about the unveiling of this fire truck. So, I thought that was interesting. So, 11 o'clock today, Fire Station...
221.
221 on Point 22. Should be Fire Station 222, but whatever.
That's yours. Great. Thank you.
I believe it's the second electric fire truck in the nation. Is that correct? If someone beat us to it, we were going to be the first.
It's the first all-electric, full-sized fire truck in the United States. Los Angeles has a European-sized all-electric fire truck.
Oh, they don't count.
Other cities have, claim to have electric, but they're hybrids. So, this is the first all-electric, full-sized fire truck in the United States.
That's something to be proud of.
Yeah.
On the mic, I just want to mention a couple of events. I attended a CompUDOT distribution event and CompUDOT was at Eagles Community Center and partnered with AT&amp;T and they provided free laptops, computers and affordable connectivity to families who, in District Four in our low-income neighborhoods. And it is very powerful to get families situated with a computer, the technical support and
And it's very powerful to get families situated with a computer, the technical support and the affordable connectivity and to have that digital equity. And so, that was a very Merry Christmas for a lot of families. And thank you to CompuDOP and the partners in AT&amp;T for providing that opportunity to our residents. And also that week, the mayor and I attended the Boys and Girls Club's Mesa Arts Academy Holiday Party. And thank you to everybody who, all the organizations that provided gifts there, that Santa was able to give gifts to all the kids at the Mesa Arts Academy. And they got to go to a table and select their gift and there, they were thrilled beyond belief to be able to select a gift. And of course, Santa would bring them their surprise gift on Christmas Day. And I want to do a shout-out to Amy Saylor from the Fiesta Police Department. I attended a Boys and Girls Club, a kindergarten holiday party that she organized with a number of people and takes six months to do it to ensure that all of the kids have gifts for Christmas and she brought in Santa Claus. And this is something that she does on her own without city support. It's tremendous. It's a huge amount of work. It's very meaningful to those families and to those kids. So, thank you to Amy for going through all that work every year to make sure everybody has a Merry Christmas. I think that's it.
Thank you.
I just, one thing I would like to congratulate, the Civil Air Patrol's Operation Pulse Lift, they have surpassed 30,000 units of blood collected since 2017, which is a huge feat and certainly very important. And I just wanted to say congratulations to them and Lieutenant Colonel Ditch for all the work that they do.
Yes. Congratulations. I'll just chime in. It's been a couple of weeks. There's been a lot going on. I had a trip to DC to be part of the Electric Vehicle Working Group at the national level that, and that was very interesting. I'm really excited about what's going to come out of that group. Had the opportunity to host Mesa Morning Live. Thank you, Mesa Chamber. Enjoyed, oh, the Experience Core Training at AARP. I think Julie could talk quite a bit about our education and workforce roundtable and identifying literacy as one of, as kind of the all-hands-on-deck goal for this year. And it was amazing. It was probably 75, 80 people with hair color the same as mine that are volunteering to step up and be tutors in third-grade classrooms. And it's the first of many such trainings. So, that was really very heartwarming to see the way our seniors are responding. Happy to join Mr. Freeman and Ms. Go-forth at the Boeing event where Santa came in on a helicopter successfully. Santa Claus, no Santas were injured in the filming of this event.
Different than your other story.
That's right. Not entirely consistent with Mesa's history. Santa arrived and safely passed out, helped the kids at Sunsign Acres. We had another great food distribution event with United Food Bank in our convention center parking lot. And as has been mentioned, I'm looking forward to the electric fire truck christening today as well as another great business on Main Street. I'm sure I'll see Ms. Duff at the Copper State Spirits Open House this afternoon, which is another great historic building that's going to be brought back into service in an exciting way. So, it's been a busy time and appreciate all the, all the good things that are happening in our community. Council, anything else you'd like to share with us? Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Thank you, Mayor. Then the first council meeting of the new year will be Monday, January 8th, and we'll see you here at 5:15. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Mr. Summers. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We are adjourned.